I'm going to call this meeting the Oskaloosa City Council to order. Today is Monday, June 16th, 2014. Let's start with the invocation by Pastor Mark Dahl, Gateway Church of the Nazarene.
Father, we thank you and we praise you for this day that you've given to us. Lord, what a joy it is to revel in the warmth of the sunshine as well as in the warmth of your love, Lord, that so often we take for granted, but Lord, we thank you for your great blessing on our country as well as our city. Lord, we thank you for these leaders that you've chosen and put in this place, Lord, to guide and direct us and to lead us into the future. We pray, Lord, as the discussions of the evening and the business that will be done here, Lord, is handled, that it will be done so with your wisdom and insight, Lord, we pray. Guide and direct our thoughts as we serve one another and our community. Thank you, Lord, for your presence and your love for us, and we just thank you, Lord, that you've been with us and you've promised to be with us until the end. So, Lord, bless this time and may you be exalted, Lord, in our hearts and lives, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Charlie, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Caliguri.
Jimenez.
Moore.
Ben Zetton.
Firstake.
Walling.
Yates.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to the agenda, item number four, this is the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're included on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council, ask to keep statements brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked of the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps even answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Kathy Fay. I live at 212 North Eighth Street. My husband and I have been Oskaloosa residents for 18 years. I am a registered dietitian. Before staying home with our three children, I was employed at Mahaska Health Partnership. In light of the growing obesity problem in our country, I believe the Blue Zones Project with its goal of improving well-being by making the healthy choice the easy choice is a wonderful opportunity for the city of Oskaloosa to take action and promote health and vitality throughout our community. It was exciting that Fairway and Hy-Vee have both become Blue Zone designated grocery stores, making it easier for their customers to identify and select healthy foods if desired. True Bank and Hunter's Cafe are other businesses in town that have also already completed the process of becoming Blue Zone designated. I congratulate all of them for their hard work in obtaining this achievement. The community also has demonstrated its interest and support of the Blue Zones Project in the following ways. Blue Zones hosted a very large and successful kickoff with over 100 volunteers and 700 participants. So far, 600 residents have made personal pledges with one completed action toward a healthier lifestyle. This already puts us at one-third of the goal of 20% community involvement. There have been frequent invitations from various organizations inviting the Blue Zones to participate or speak about the project. Relay for Life, Farmer's Market, Rotary Club, and Maple Ridge, to name just a few. Over 400 Blue Zone volunteer hours from individuals have already been logged with this project. As city leaders, you provide the vision for our community and are key to its success and prosperity. It is evident that many Oskaloosans are in support of the Blue Zone Project and are eager to work toward becoming a certified Blue Zone community. I ask that you will take note of this and vote in favor of the resolution, not only to help Oskaloosa achieve certification as a Blue Zones community, but more importantly, to improve the overall well-being of Oskaloosa residents. Thank you for listening.
Hello, my name is Debbie Guild. I reside at 304 North Third Street. I'm currently employed as your Oskaloosa Hy-Vee dietitian. As an Oskaloosa resident, I'm very excited about the potential positive impact on the city of Oskaloosa becoming a Blue Zone community. We had an exciting week last week at Hy-Vee, not sure if you heard, but last Wednesday we got, celebrated our designation as a Blue Zone grocery store. At Hy-Vee, and also my involvement in the community, I've received numerous positive feedback and appreciation about taking the initiative to become designated. However, the job of becoming designated wasn't done by only me. It took a team of people that believe in this project, and they include members of the Oskaloosa Healthy Foods Committee, Oskaloosa Hy-Vee employees, and many other community The newest healthy addition that I'm honestly most proud of at Hy-Vee is the Blue Zone Healthy Checkout Lane. We've replaced the candy bars with the fresh fruit, the nuts, dried fruit, and healthy granola bars. I think this is an example that really illustrates the purpose of the Blue Zone Project. We're making the healthier choice easier. Those that want the healthy checkout lane can use aisle three, but the other checkout lanes remain. I stand here and challenge you as my city leaders that as you strategize for the coming years, you keep the health of Oskaloosa residents in your view. Health and happiness go hand in hand. Children who are fed healthy meals have been shown to perform better in school. When workplaces become healthy and less stressful, employers see stronger retention and will have more tax-paying citizens living and working in Oskaloosa. The list of benefits goes on and on. I am what they call a transplant to Oskaloosa. As our family moved here about 15 months ago, I've been very impressed with the many things this community has to offer. Let's continue to invest in our future, but also my children's future. I think community projects like Blue Zones that are engaged with city government, Oskaloosa resident schools, and businesses have the potential to be very successful. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time? Seeing none, I'll move on. Item number five, this is the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature. Typically, we don't spend a lot of time discussing these, and so routine things like council meeting minutes, you know, payment of claims, approval of cigarette permits. Did want to draw your attention that item G is allowing for the more expeditious abatement of repeat offenses, of nuisances. That's a third reading. Parking restriction on both sides of South Fourth Street, being 25-foot from the intersection of South Fourth and 15th Avenue East, that's a third reading. And then also, an ordinance that's amending the provisions pertaining to Chapter 10.48, parking regulations around the school loading and unloading zones, that's a third reading. Do we have a motion for approval?
Second.
Okay. The motion is second. Any discussion?
Yeah, see on the retail cigarette, tobacco, nicotine, and paper. Is that new, that paper?
That's a state thing, isn't it?
I don't know, I'm just asking. That's the first time I see it on there.
It is new this year. They've changed the form, although our forms had already gone out in May and probably two or three days before the agenda came out, the state had changed their forms, but they said we could go ahead and use the old forms, but that's what they're calling it now, starting July 1st.
What does that imply for you, though?
I don't know what all that's going to imply.
Yeah, there we go.
Amy, there are no claims tonight, right?
There were two claims that were added to the agenda. And they are, they were in the, just under the explanation, since there's not a list. One's agrar land chemicals, $3,221.48. And then the other one is quill office furniture for $6,630.82.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Yates.
Yes.
Caliguri.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ben Zetton.
Yes.
Firstake.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Getting into the regular agenda, Part Six, Item A. This is a Consider a Resolution Authorizing Execution of a Lease Agreement for a Postage Meter System. This is the time for the public hearing to, on entering into a lease agreement with Pitney Bose. It's for a postage meter system, 60 months, $47.67 a month. The city's lease of $44.31 a month on the old postage meter system has expired, and Pitney Bose isn't going to service this equipment, and so they're recommending a digital system along with a five-pound scale for a $47.67 a month fee. So, there's a slight increase, about 200 bucks over the terms of the lease. Do we have a motion for, well, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anyone care to speak about leasing a postage meter? Thank you. I'll close the hearing at this time. Okay, do we have a motion supporting this? Okay, any discussion?
Just one quick, why is this on here?
We went through that last night, yeah?
Required by state law.
Okay, because it's a lease agreement?
Because it's a lease.
Yeah, multi-year. Roll call, please.
Caliguri.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ben Zetton.
Yes.
Firstake.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
This is great, we're on a roll. Okay, next item. Item B is to consider a resolution approving the plant specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Third Avenue East Reconstruction Project, and this is a public hearing as well. Garnett Associates has prepared plans and specs for the Third Avenue East Reconstruction Project. Scope of the project includes new concrete pavement with curb and gutter, ADA sidewalk ramps, storm and sanitary sewer improvements, new water main, new concrete alley approaches and driveway replacements along Third Avenue East, all the way from South Market Street to South Seventh Street. Pavement replacement and storm sewer improvements will also be done from South Sixth Street to First Avenue East to Third Avenue East, and along South First Street from Rock Island Avenue to Third Avenue East. Additional water main will be placed along South First Street from First Avenue East to Third Avenue East. Engineers' estimated cost for the project is a total of $1,610,510, and it's shared with the Public Works Department and Water Department. So, the Public Works Department's share is in the amount of $1,330,550, and the Water Department's share is the remainder, $279,955. If the project is awarded, construction would be proposed to commence in August or September of this year. Anticipated work completion time, 150 working days. Due to the length of time required for the project, the work would likely be suspended during the winter. In the fall of 2014, only work in the city right-of-way would be performed. Street reconstruction would begin in the spring of 2015, or as soon as favorable weather conditions return. So, now's the time for anyone interested to express their opinions concerning the project plan, specifications, form of contract, or estimate of costs. So, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who has an opinion on this? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And do we have a, let's see here, yeah, do we have a motion supporting it at this time?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Ben Zetton.
Yes.
Firstake.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caliguri.
Okay, that passes. Item C, this is to consider a resolution that would award or reject a contract to Cornerstone Excavating for the Third Avenue East Reconstruction Project, previously described, in an amount not to exceed $1,742,476.25. The project was advertised and bids were received and publicly read on June 10th of 2014. There was only one bid from Cornerstone Excavating in the amount of, like I said, $1,742,476.25. That's 8.2% over the engineer's estimate of $1,610,510. Bob Nielsen, the engineer for this project, has recommended rejecting the bid and rebidding the project. If the project is awarded, construction is proposed to commence in September of this year. Anticipated work completion time, 150 working days, and then, as I described earlier, finishing up in the, after the fall of 2014, as weather would allow. If the council would award the construction contract, staff would recommend authorizing an additional 5% of the contract amount, which is little over $87,000, as construction contingency for unforeseen circumstances, and also authorize the city manager to execute all related contract documents that are contingent upon receipt and approval of insurance and bond documents. So, anyway, do we have a motion regarding the awarding or rejecting a contract to Cornerstone Excavating?
Make a motion to reject it.
Okay. Any discussion?
The only discussion item would be if we do reject this, then we would want staff to continue moving on with another project in the capital planning list. I think the next one on the list would be to look at the Old Laye Project for South 11th, is that correct?
Right, and I think one of the things I'd like to bring up for the public is that you, as council, discussed this in study session, and whether or not you would approve the bid above the engineer's cost opinion and above the budgeted amount that we have in the council-approved budget for fiscal year 15. And the consensus at that study session was, that seems a little high, actually seems a little more than a little high, appreciate the bid, but let's reconsider, let's rebid it, and see if we can get more competition so that we can lower the cost to the taxpayers and still get the project done.
Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Moore?
Some will, yes, we reject.
That's correct.
Ben Zetton.
Yes.
Firstake.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caliguri.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Okay, it's rejected. Moving on, item D, this is to consider a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2015 property liability automobile equipment and workers' compensation insurance proposal. Comes to $208,674 for the year. I understand Margaret Ratcliffe is going to be presenting to review the insurance proposal. It is an increase of $19,778, and maybe you can take it from there. Margaret?
My name is Margaret Ratcliffe, and I'm with the Butler Brown Division of Midwest One Insurance Services. To begin a review of the 2014 insurance referral, or renewal, I would refer you to the document titled Insurance Proposal for the City of Oskaloosa. This document provides historical premium data so that we can be aware of any fluctuations. Let's begin with the property. The premium shows an increase to $34,627 from $30,152. The building and the contents are covered on a blanket basis, an increase from a total value of $19,384,650 to $19,669,780 due to revised replacement cost estimates. This total also takes into account the removal of the previous Water Department building. In addition, we've seen property and insurance rates continue to increase due to severe storms and losses across the country. Equipment and computer premiums increased from $13,765 to $15,345. Scheduled equipment was increased by $54,373, and computers were increased by $9,893. The street department and the wastewater department both added additional pieces of equipment. Borrowed equipment was increased to $100,000 to cover the equipment that's being borrowed from the Water Department, and that included $950 for that premium. Computers had regularly scheduled upgrades, and equipment was added primarily at City Hall. The general liability premiums based on your projected net expenditures, which increased from $4,962,316,000 to $5,273,401. This resulted in a slight premium increase from $12,223 to $12,671. The automobile premium did drop a wee bit, from $27,173 to $26,661, and there were several normal vehicle switches during the year. The umbrella premium increased from $15,063 to $15,940, which is a regular rate increase. Now, our next section is where it gets a little bit harder. The workman's compensation insurance showed an expected increase premium from $55,089 to $66,108. A couple of things contributed to that. There was a payroll increase from $1,768,829 to $1,831,471. Even without a payroll increase, there was going to be a substantial premium increase during, due to rate increases that are set by the NCCI, the National Council on Compensation Insurance. In addition, due to some loss experience, the experience modification factor increased from 1.00 to 1.08. Those of you that deal with workman's compensation insurance understand that an experience factor of one could be called kind of a baseline or average. You want to try really hard to get under that so you can get credits, that's hard to do, and accidents do take a toll on that. So, unfortunately, due to some losses and the change in how they figure the split-point rating structure, we'll probably expect a wee bit of an increase again next year. So, I just kind of want to give you a heads-up on that. The good news is that they still allow the longevity discount of 5% and a large premium discount of 14%. The law enforcement liability increased from $15,828 to $17,283. We just missed a 10% increase last year. It was effective in July of 2013, but that did catch up with us this year. Your public officials' liability increased from $10,123 to $10,651. Employment practices liability premium dropped a bit from $9,480 to $9,388, which is a normal rate fluctuation, and it still includes some coverages that are provided automatically instead of being purchased as options, which was consent to settle, back wages, EEOC complaint handling, and non-monetary defense coverages. Last but not least is the terrorism insurance coverage. Historically, the city has not purchased that. It can be purchased for $588 if the council would so choose, but historically, they have not. As most of you know, we've had the city coverage with Cincinnati Insurance Company for many, many years, and we greatly appreciate the business. One of the responsibilities that we have as an independent insurance agent is to go through a process every year to review the coverages, make sure we have the correct coverages with the best possible company at a competitive cost. We write for a lot of carriers. Not many of them offer packages for cities. EMC has a safety group program that we pursued, but the city of Oskaloosa has a bit of a unique challenge. One is the fact that the city owns and is responsible for a parking lot that surrounds a mall, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Out of the 455 communities that EMC ensures, not a single one of them happens to be responsible for the city parking around a local mall. So, with the history of some losses that we've had there, and until that whole area is repaired, they're not willing to provide a quote. So, thank you for replacing the JCPenney's parking lot, that's wonderful, and whatever progress you can make in that will only enable us to access some different markets to get some more competitive quotes. You know, competition is good. We want them to sharpen their pencils, and so I just want to kind of give you a heads-up on that. I do want to note that the city has been very proactive and aggressive in systematically addressing any potential loss exposures. They work so hard on the sewer system, the parks, the streets, and I even received an email this last week from Jeff Hovey, an underwriter at IMWCA stating, and I quote, "The city of Oskaloosa has implemented any changes or recommendations that we have had. They're very motivated and they're very good to work with." Coming from an insurance company, that's a nice thing to hear. So, I just wanted to say thank you for all of you and the staff that has worked so hard to prevent those, prevent those claims and save the taxpayers some money. So, seem they have any questions?
Terrorism was, what, $533?
$588, if you want to add it.
Does that mean if somebody walks into City Hall and bombs it, we're not covered?
No. And if, the terrorism coverage was effective in November of 2002, government stepped into the role of becoming a reinsurance company. They have to define a situation as an act of terrorism, okay? There has to be over $100 or $100 million in losses to trigger the terrorism program. So...
So, unless we hit 100 million, we're...
And unless, and unless the Secretary of the Treasury designates that it was a terrorism act.
Okay.
Okay? It's one more way to spend money, but I don't know that we're looking for that. Okay?
Very good. Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt this fiscal year 2015 property liability automobile equipment and workers' comp insurance?
So, move.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Ben Zetton.
Yes.
Firstake.
Yes.
Walling.
Yes.
Yates.
Yes.
Caliguri.
Yes.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Takes us to Item E. This is to consider a request from Mr. Gillespie to waive the sidewalk maintenance and use regulations as outlined in Chapter 12.12 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code for Parcel Numbers, 1130126013 and 1130126014. Generally, they're located at 1103 Woodland Road. In explanations to this, during the May 19th, 2014, called to the public, Mr. Gillespie made a request to remove the existing sidewalk that's located at his property, 1103 Woodland Road. The existing sidewalk is within the city's right-of-way, and according to Oskaloosa Municipal Code, Chapter 12.12, Sidewalk Maintenance and Use Regulations, the sidewalk must remain in place and continue to be maintained free of defects by the property owner. Mr. Gillespie is requesting a waiver from the Oskaloosa Municipal Code, Chapter 12.12, so he can proceed with removing the sidewalk within the right-of-way and discontinue the maintenance responsibilities. Mr. Gillespie, I'll open up the floor to you if you care to speak to the council at this time.
Sure, I'll speak briefly, and basically, you've heard me before, so, and this is basically for Scotty, because she hasn't heard this. These sidewalks stretch for about 360 feet. The area in yellow is the lot next door to our house, and the house is to the right. These sidewalks are in terrible shape. Originally, the sidewalks were put in, to my knowledge, back before 1958, which was when Chuck Walling bought the property. So, those sidewalks have been there for a long time. They were put in by an individual, they were in the county, they weren't city sidewalks. There was no design work, that I know of, by the city to put these sidewalks in, and they absolutely don't go anyplace, and to my knowledge, there's no design work out there to attach them to another sidewalk, to another sidewalk. There's no design work. The road is blocktop, there's no curb and gutter, there's no storm sewer. So, I've got a liability if somebody gets on there and breaks their neck. And I've got a valuation problem. We just got through putting in a lot of money for landscaping. I could sit on my patio, and I can look at these sidewalks that you didn't design, the county didn't design, some individual designed them, and the city, not you guys, the city has never requested any snow removal from these sidewalks, never, or any repair work. I'm willing to take them out, you know, I'd be willing to put them back in if there was a design to attach them to some other sidewalks, but there is not. So, let me take them out, let me get rid of the liability, let me get rid of the valuation problem, and seat it down and go on down the road. I mean, that's as blunt as I can put it. I know of, let me put you, put yourself in my situation. I know of four council members here that live on a similar road, okay? Let's say you had these sidewalks on your property. What would you be wanting the city to do? I'm willing to take them out for free, get rid of the liability that I have, and get rid of the valuation problem that I've got there. They're not, they're not good-looking sidewalks. That's all I have to say. Any questions?
Thanks, Tom.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the agenda talks about considering a request. Do we have a motion regarding waiving the requirement in Chapter 12.12?
I have a brief question. I know there's a house across the street from him on the corner that's been put up the last couple of years that has no sidewalks. Is it out there, we haven't had a policy of new building having sidewalks?
If it's an individual house that comes in, there's nothing in the code that requires it. We've been requiring the sidewalks on subdivisions. So, as staff, we'd like to see something put in that would require it even on single lot developments, but we don't have anything in place that says that.
So, anyway, I need a... So anyway, I need a motion one way or the other.
So moved.
To waive or to not waive?
To waive.
Okay. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now we can talk about it in more depth, if anybody has any additional. Scotty, do you have anything?
I was just curious why we were going to ask him to leave that sidewalk when a new house across the street and up on the corner didn't have sidewalks. We seem to not have a policy that we're always going to have sidewalks, or never have sidewalks, or sometimes have sidewalks, or...
Forty or 50 years, Brian Boyle will be standing up asking for the same thing. That's true. We've got this all over town.
Yeah. And I've been on city council for a number of years, and the attitude of the council has shifted over the years. There are times when people thought that a sidewalk in a front yard was not particularly attractive, and so there were, the subdivision I live in, for example, doesn't have sidewalks in it. But then there are other, there was change during that, later on while I was on council, where we were paying attention to the number of people that were walking in the streets. And so the decision was made at that point, we need to be more friendly to our pedestrians, get them off the street, put them on a sidewalk, and then if they're on a sidewalk, it should be of such a condition that they can walk on it without getting hurt. So the kids have someplace to have their tricycles and all that sort of thing, too. I mean, you've got to walk around that. But that, it has changed, and so Oskaloosa does have inconsistency in its history.
We've got subdivisions being built right now with no sidewalks, since Brian built his. Just south of the swimming pool, there's one. Building houses on it right now, no sidewalks. I'm all for taking the sidewalks out. But I just think we don't have any consistency in this town.
Can I ask you a question? I mean, you and I had at least a couple of phone conversations about this, and two meetings ago, I voted against this. I've been given a lot of thought since then. I just want to confirm our conversation. We talked about what would happen down the road if we did come up with this plan and all that, and I think you stated to me if we did decide to put other sidewalks in, that at that point, you would gladly put the sidewalk back in. Am I correct in that?
There's no doubt of that. I mean, that's not a problem, no.
Okay. Thank you.
But I'm not going to sign something... Yeah. No, I would. Sure.
Okay. That's all.
Why don't you do what I did and propose, what I proposed with the buoy was waive it until a connectivity plan, if and when it ever comes up?
I considered a different issue with a developer versus an individual homeowner.
Well, I'm even saying now with him. You could amend that now.
But you're saying everybody, if they connect with other sidewalks in the area...
Or at least if we came up with a plan. That we were going to put them in, that you would also be part of that, and you would not resist that plan?
No, I wouldn't resist that, no. No.
Thank you.
And Mayor, Council, again, this, just to make sure that we understand, this is something that's already within the existing right-of-way, and so that's why this is a request from the existing ordinance. There's an ordinance that says that the homeowners are responsible to maintain what's in the right-of-way, and that happens to be those sidewalks, whether they were designed by us or someone else. They're there today, and we have, in other instances, required other property owners who wanted to remove them, we required them to put them back in place. South 7th, the Superior Ideal Building, is an exact example of this. Similar claim, we as staff enforce the ordinance that's on the books.
I agree, Michael, but it's not quite the same because he took them out without asking. So we told him to put the public property back. At least Mr. Gillespie is asking upfront. I'm just, you know, this, yeah, it's okay.
I don't necessarily see him being different, but...
It's a sidewalk to nowhere. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me. I mean, whether it's a developer or a private homeowner, it's a sidewalk to nowhere.
Ultimately, that's what it is.
Michael, I want to make sure, the property you referenced, was there any connecting sidewalks to that sidewalk?
Yes.
Okay.
On one end, no, but still there was.
Okay.
So are you going to amend that, your motion to, if there's a connectivity plan, or are you going to leave it standing?
My motion was to waive it.
For perpetuity, so...
No, for this particular...
Well, I know, but he doesn't ever have to, let's say we come up with something, he never has to let it.
He just told me he would.
Well, I understand that, but that's...
You've got the ability to do it to anybody.
I'm just, I'm just asking you.
Yeah, I know. I trust him.
Wow.
The one issue that hasn't come out of this again, and I said this two weeks ago, is the fact, part of this sidewalk is already missing. There's two other owners that have removed it, and that's the only reason I'm voting to allow them to take it out, because I don't think we're going to tell them to put it back in. And we haven't been telling them to put it back in.
Did they even ask?
And it really doesn't have a darn bit that it was never shoveled. The property owner was, that was against the ordinance for Oskaloosa, they should have been shoveling it. But my dad planted bushes over it, and nobody knew it was there. So, you know, and the other sidewalk in front, the pasture's been there, it's the same sidewalk. But there's two properties, again, the sidewalk's been removed, so to me, that makes an exception. That doesn't mean I'm right, but that's my exception I'm voting on.
Now, but there are other sidewalks on that side of the street along that block, right? There's some gaps in there, but there are other sidewalks.
Two gaps.
Okay.
When I rode my tricycle, I rode from the corner, clear to Joe Kirkham's property line. It was all solid.
Was that this weekend?
No. Just checking. But now there's two voids.
You had to get that in, didn't you? I was wondering.
He just walked right into that, didn't he, Tom?
I guess my point is that it's not exactly a sidewalk to nowhere because there are other sidewalks there. It's just that there's a gap.
Two of them. Yep.
And as I stated last meeting, I would like to see us come up with a consistent policy, and perhaps that consistent policy is wherever there's sidewalks taken out, as a city, we're going to go back and tell everybody to put them back in, and so three months from now, we may tell Mr. Gillespie, put it back in, until we have the time to work on that policy and take it to a committee and work on it, which we don't have at the moment. As Tom said, I've got some reasons in my mind where I'm at least willing to look at this an exceptional case.
But there is a request to have that committee start meeting.
Yes, at some point.
There is.
So even if you plant grass seed, you may have to do it soon.
Any other comments?
It's for everybody else, though.
Exactly.
The vote is for the waiver? Roll call, please.
Versteg?
Okay. We're allowing him to take them out, right? Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Okay. That passes. Item F, is to consider a request from Tricia Ireland. It's for a reduction of sanitary sewer charges for the property located at 615 C Avenue East. Tricia is requesting a reduction of sanitary sewer charges billed for her property. According to an employee from the water department, her excessive use of water was due to a pipe that broke under her house. Sanitary sewer charges for the period in question amounted $2,923.13. It's based on 799 units of water, where one unit is equal to just shy of 750 gallons. The average usage for the previous three months is 30 units of water, which would amount to about $131.66. So the possible reduction would be $2,791.47. In August of 2010, the city council adopted a sanitary sewer leak adjustment policy that stated the city shall not provide sanitary sewer customers a reduction or waiver in service fees or charges. Ms. Ireland has indicated, and she'll be here at the council meeting after she's dealt with the water board, which I believe their meeting was postponed, and then the council was also handed a written document that looks like it's three pages in length describing the situation. So Ms. Ireland, if you care to speak to the council, I'll open the floor to you.
I've been in the community for 32 years. I've been legally employed and paying taxes for 26 years, since I was 13 years old, to help support my family. I've owned my property for 20 years, current on all my taxes, same insurance policy for 20 years. Two weeks prior to the pipe breaking under the restroom in the dirt crawl space that nobody enters, I had, during the severe storm, I had the willow tree uprooted and land on my house. We dug the stump out Sunday, and it was so soft and rotted from all the water underneath that, in the groundwater, 600,000 gallons almost underneath my house. The neighbors directly to the north of us, which is also slightly downhill, is in the process of rebuilding their retaining wall to keep the land and the house from shifting into their property. There is an insurance claim. Luke Vandewall is working on the estimate with Foremost Insurance. There is significant damage underneath the house, mold, I'm sorry. There's a support underneath the bathroom that has to be replaced. He had to cut holes in the tarping that covers the dirt so it could drain the water. We're still in the process of that drying out so he can get underneath there. The entry access to the crawl space is very small and tiny, very labor-intensive, is what they're telling me, which might require the removal of the bathroom floor and putting the fixtures back in after the floor is then put back in. I am a single mom of two. I work full-time. I'm college-educated, however, I'm unable to obtain adequate employment with my degree in Oski, so I do the best I can at Peloproducts full-time. That allows me to be home nights and weekends with my children for the first time in 10 years. I'm trying the best I can do, but $7,000 is half my yearly income. I receive no child support. I am on medical and food assistance for my children. But like I said, I've been working since I was 13 years old. I guess I'm just seeking a little compassion, a little understanding, a little help. The manager of the water department that day told me that if I'm unable to pay, they will put a lien against the taxes and potentially seize the property, which I've lived in since I was 12. It may not be a very uppity house, or a very, you know, but I do the best I can to upkeep it. It is the home my children have lived in their whole lives, and at this point, if I continue to face the financial hardships here, I'm going to have to relocate again, and I don't want to do that to my children. I want them to grow up here. And I promised my son in 2006, when we moved back from Alaska, that I wouldn't relocate again. And up there, I was doing better. I was substitute teaching. But I'm a year away from my teaching certificate, and a lot of that is in-classroom observations, and being a single mom working full-time, I don't see how that works in order for me to complete that. That's where I'm at.
Any questions for Ms. Ireland from the council?
Is there anything that your insurance can cover on this, or...
No. They did not cover broken pipe. I had to pay for that. They will not pay for any of the billing process, any of the lost water or sewage. The sewage didn't even go into the sewer system. It went all into the groundwater, according to the water department and according to Vandewall. So, you know, that, Luke had advised me to, you know, I didn't even know where to begin, you know? It's just been advisements from Luke, and, you know, I've spoke to Eric Palmer a little bit. I've spoke, you know, just networking, researching, trying to figure out what I can do, you know? This is a pretty intimidating process.
So this water didn't go in the sewer at all?
No, it did not. It went into the groundwater.
It didn't go in the sewer.
I mow my yard twice a week. I have not watered my garden once. You know, I mean, when it rains, I get a lake in my front yard because it's all sitting underneath my little lot, you know? There's more, Chad King told me to picture the Edmondson Swimming Pool. It's more than that under my house.
Tricia, did you not notice?
No. No, I didn't. The water pressure in the house was normal except for in the shower. And when you were taking a shower, you know, I'm multitask. I, you know, chase soccer five times a week, and so we'll have the dishwasher or the laundry going while somebody's in the shower. I just figured, you know, it's a 1939 house. It's old. That's the way it works, you know? But I've learned. It's a hard way.
Can you tell me why it took six days for the water department to notify?
I do not know. That part, I'm pretty upset over. You know, there's other neighbors that have...
That's the root cause of this whole problem, I think.
They, I went to the water department today and asked them for a written policy or, on their notification process of excessive water usage or abnormal water usage. I have had, and they told me that there is not one in writing. It is up to the billing department, and it's arbitrarily done. She told me that she made the phone call to work on the 14th, which is when I was called home, and they knew about it on May 8th. So they let it run for another six days at 13 units a day, and each unit is 748 gallons. So that makes in excess of 9,724 gallons a day for 58,344 gallons extra that could have been avoided that they knew of at the time of May 8th. There's also people in town through networking that have told me that they were notified within 24 or 48 hours when they filled an above-ground swimming pool for the year, and why that was going on, and, you know, my neighbors directly north of me, the Millburns, they told me that when they moved four of their children back home, well, children, grandchildren, that they were notified within two weeks of an increase in water usage. So why 55 days? You know, I just don't understand.
Any other questions, Ms. Ireland? Okay. Thank you very much. So I'll open it up for discussion to the council. Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive it.
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Okay.
That passes. Takes us to item G, is to consider a resolution stating support for actions aligned with achieving the Blue Zones certification. Blue Zones Project received statements of interest from 84 Iowa communities in November of 2011. Of these 84 communities, 58 were invited to submit a comprehensive application, and in January of 2012, 54 communities completed the applications to continue their journey to become a demonstration site. Finalist communities were selected for site visits, and then 10 communities with populations of 10,000 or greater were chosen as Blue Zone Project demonstration communities. Four communities launched in 2012, three in 2013, and three in 2014, which included Oskaloosa. In order for the city of Oskaloosa to become an official Blue Zones community, the city must earn at least 40% of the total points listed on the Blue Zones Community Policy Pledge and implement at least two pledge action items, and that would be 17 points, the way they score these things. During May 19, 2014 city council meeting, the council voted four to three, with Jimenez, Van Zetten, and Versteg voting in opposition on a motion to support moving forward with the planning and zoning committees, excuse me, with the planning committee's recommendation to pursue 16 Community Policy Pledge items for a total of 25 points. The items concluded in the recommendation can be found in the resolution of support. We've got that attached. As part of becoming a Blue Zones demonstration community, the city must complete, successfully complete 17 points worth of the Community Policy Pledge items by August of 2015. Assistance towards completing the various Community Policy Pledge items by that date will be provided via community volunteers, as well as staff that is hired and assigned to Oskaloosa by Healthways. So on June 2 of 2014, city council voted 3-3, with Jimenez, Van Zetten, and Versteg in opposition on a resolution stating support for Blue Zones. Oskaloosa Code Section 2.9, City Council Action, states that any measure resulting in a tie vote shall be reconsidered at the next regular city council meeting. The resolution that was voted on June 2 has been modified to include the Community Policy Build, Built Environment Changes. Although these items are included in the Community Policy Pledge, they were left out on the first resolution due to an office oversight. So do we have a motion for approval of a resolution stating support for the Blue Zone certification?
So moved, second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second? Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?[1797.53]
Okay, it passes. Moving on, item H. It's Consider a Request from the Haska County YMCA to Establish an Annual Financial Partnership with the City of Oskaloosa. The amount of $193,000 and some change. The city staff received the attached request from the Haska County YMCA on June 9th of 2014. The document outlines the YMCA's rationale for seeking an annual financial partnership with the city in the amount of 190, well, let's see, I've got it in two different places here. I believe it's 193,035. Understand Board Member Jim Blomgren and Board Treasurer Dave Fitch have requested time to make a presentation. Would you care to come to the podium?
Good evening and thank you. My name is Jim Blomgren. I am a board member from the Haska County YMCA. I'm here to talk with you about our proposal with regard to the 28E agreement, which we hope will last for three years. We, Dave Fitch is also here. He's the treasurer of the board. Don Collins is our executive director. She is also here, and we have several other board members from the YMCA who are obviously interested and concerned with regard to this proposal. One of the things that I would like to do initially is talk a little bit about the Y and where it is currently. It has had a presence in Oskaloosa since 1866. Since that time, it has been a force for healthy living, social responsibility, and youth development. Most of you probably are aware that it was on High Avenue for a long period of time. Currently, it's at the corner of North Third Street and Sea Avenue East. It has been there for, since 1969. At that time, the community was heavily involved in the construction of that building and in developing the new programs for the Y. The Y provides childcare services, sports, and fitness activities. It provides aquatics. It's the only indoor aquatic facility in Oskaloosa. It is used regularly with regard to other entities in the city. In 2003, or in 2013, the YMCA employed 63 people either on a full-time or part-time basis, merged later in the year with Kids' Corner, provides childcare currently for 300 children. It is by far the largest childcare provider in the city. That number of children is probably close to 50% of all licensed childcare spots in the city. It has provided over 7,000 hours of volunteer work. The sports and other activities are too numerous to mention, but has provided for many of the members of our community fitness and childcare activities. The Y has not functioned in a vacuum at all. It has partnerships with other entities in the community, the school district, the hospital, William Penn University. With the school district, it provides preschool services. It provides phys ed classes for the alternative high school students. It provides space in its aquatic facility for the high school swim team. The Haska Early Learning Program with Kids' Corner and the childcare with Haska Health Partnership. The YMCA provides physical therapy for people who are receiving care at the hospital and who need the physical therapy in order for them to recover from their conditions. The Y also receives funding from a variety of sources. It is initially a membership-based organization, although most studies indicate that a membership model business plan normally is not going to be sufficient to meet the costs of the operation, particularly in a community of this size. But the Y works with the United Way. They receive funding from the United Way on an annual basis by making a presentation to that organization. They receive funding from the Lacy Trust, which is specifically designated in that trust as a recipient of the funds. There are grant applications made for the Haska County Community Foundation, as well as from the George Daley Family Trust. Those are usually done on an individual basis for capital improvements, and, but we have been successful at times with that. The problem with those types of funding sources is that they're not reliable in terms of being consistent. They have been reliable from the standpoint of providing funding on an annual basis, but the amounts are constantly subject to review. The Lacy Trust, for instance, is dependent upon how the investments perform during the year. The United Way, as you all know, receives constant requests for funding, and it's a very competitive process from the standpoint of making the applications and trying to receive those funds. The methods in other communities of our size involve collaborative relationships and shared resources with cities and school districts, sometimes both in those communities. We have some examples in this chart, but in the process that we made to try to put together this proposal, we contacted many cities, Charles City, Washington, Red Oak, Mason City, and virtually every community provided assistance in one way or another. An interesting example is Macocata, which has a population of approximately 6,100. They own the building. They provide the utilities and infrastructure maintenance. Their cost is significant with regard to that. Other communities recently, such as Indianola, have also constructed a multimillion-dollar facility by collaborating with Des Moines, the city of Indianola. I believe Simpson College was involved in that. And they have, through that collaboration, been able to provide a source for the entire community in Indianola to do fitness and other athletic events. The current situation with regard to the Y is such that we have operating deficits. We have, in recent years, looked carefully at our revenue sources, our expenses. We have initiated annual audit processes, changed the accounting and business practices in order to more accurately reflect our situation. We have done cost analyses. We have increased our efforts to raise funding from community members in a fundraising drive, which has, in the last two years, generated in excess of $120,000 from community members who voluntarily provide financing for us, which is in addition to their membership costs. Those numbers are significant, significantly higher than what we had previously gotten. We have also done studies for childcare because with the merger with Kids' Corner and the amount of childcare that we provide, it requires significant management as well as analysis for the cost and the income. Many of you may well know that childcare is also a difficult area, particularly at this level, to maintain what I would call a profit, but to pay, in effect, for the operations that we provide for people in the community. There is a maintenance on the building that has often been postponed to meet other costs. We have had people look at our building, and they have indicated that it, this is their language, it has good bones, which I think means that the essential part of the infrastructure is solid, but there are many things, and I can use the boilers as an example, that need to be addressed. The, this, this may not be completely accurate, but the replacement of the boilers that currently exist would maybe double the space that would be available in the area where they are because of the changes and improvements that have occurred in being able to construct boilers that would heat the same kind of a facility but be half the size. So there are many things that we have done and continue to try to do in order to be effective. But we think a 28E agreement with the city would provide not only an opportunity to upgrade certain of our facilities to maintain an indispensable aquatic center, but to give us an opportunity to put together an organization or a group of people who are willing to discuss the big picture with regard to recreation and childcare in Oskaloosa. And interestingly, we have already had a 28E agreement with regard to the preschool, and so we have had some experience with that. We think a 28E agreement provides benefits to the city and to the YMCA. We think that a, an initial three-year plan is an effective way to do that, and we think that it is particularly justifiable because of the things that the YMCA provides for the community. There is no other organization that I'm aware of that has contact with residents of our community from the time they are infants until they are past being an octogenarian. We provide childcare. We provide health and fitness. We provide summer camps. And the things that not only benefit the people in the community, but the Y provides them with choices and opportunities. And we think that an effective and functioning YMCA also provides quality-of-life improvements and economic development opportunities. And again, as you know, people who may be thinking of moving to this community, young people who will be energetic and interested in what happens, look at several things. They look at a school district. They look at healthcare or medical assistance availability, and they look at childcare and health and recreation opportunities. Two of those categories are provided by the YMCA, and it is an asset not only to the community but to the residents of that community, and such an asset that we think it justifies a 28E agreement that would continue to provide those opportunities. Mr. Fitch, as the treasurer, knows more about the dollars and cents of it than I do, but we appreciate the opportunity to be here and happy to talk about any questions you might have.
I have a question. It says this initial two-to-three-year investment will allow time to adequately plan for the future. What would be different three years from now?
Well, I think, just in terms of the dollars, Mr. Fitch will answer that, but I think what it will do is provide an opportunity for us to visit in detail on a greater scale with the hospital, with the school system, and develop sharing of resources with William Penn University, and develop some relations that would allow interaction from all of those groups and perhaps some support from them.
Would that be funding support?
Well, I think it would be yes, is the short answer to that. It would be some funding, but also utilization would be important, too.
How soon do you think the current YMCA building, much- your membership in my op row itself, is it, the building still large enough to accommodate the memberships and the activities you're building in?
You know, right now, the childcare process, by the way, I'm Dave, Dave Fitch. The childcare that we're doing right now, we're doing, Don, you can confirm this, in three different facilities? Four different facilities. So ideally, it'd be wonderful to have all that under one roof and, and be able to provide more resource to other people. I think right now, what we're really trying to do is to find a bridge. You know, the dollars that we've proposed here are actually dollars that we're currently spending. And, and I did want to recognize a very kind, gracious, generous community that has really allowed us to continue to operate by essentially contributing dollars to fund our budget. So the things that we're asking for are things that we're presently spending dollars on today, but we're funding those through the generosity of others. Now, we've also made that happen by the fact that we've kind of put Band-Aids on maintenance and things. It's an old facility. We've, we've had wonderful partners that have come in and helped us make changes to the facilities that we've had at little or no cost to us or actual cost of dollars out of our, you know, from a cost perspective, we're not paying what we'd pay if we had somebody coming in doing that work, other than from a generous partner coming in and helping us do that, those types of things. I think the types of things we think about is, the idea is to really have a broader dialogue with the community and try to find out what is it that people want in a way of recreation, childcare? How do they want that service delivered? How much might they be willing to pay? We want to be able to look at members. What are we offering to our members? What could we do in an existing facility? Or what other options there might be? I think we're, we need some time to try to figure out those things, but I know in the next couple of years, we've got some fairly serious maintenance issues that need to be dealt with. And some of these dollars that we get from the community from a, from a contribution perspective, I think are going to need to go to try to kind of put a Band-Aid on getting to the next place. So I think that's our reason for asking for a kind of two-to-three-year period here to let us assess and have a broader dialogue with some of our partners in the community to really assess what kind of facility, where do we want to go? Maybe we're right where we're at, and we put more dollars into the facility we have. Maybe we do... maybe we do something different. We don't know at this point what that might be.
Dave, obviously, the request here is specific to the operations of the aquatic piece of it, and I don't know that much about that piece, but I have heard that the swimming program is, does very well in the community, and now that we have the high school. Does the pool meet the needs of a very competitive swimming program? Is it the right size, as far as the number of lanes, length, all of that? Or are we still short, if we keep it running, that if we really were serious about swimming in the community, we'd have a different-sized pool? Does anyone know? What's the...
Don, would you come to the microphone?
It's at least short a lane.
The length is sufficient of our current pool for competitive swimming, and we are able to host swim meets that are Y-sanctioned. We, there are not enough lanes to host high school swim sanctioned events, and arguably not enough lanes to host very many Y-sanctioned events. It's really challenging, and I've been in the room with aquatics directors, it's very challenging to get other communities to be willing to drive here because we have a four-lane pool.
To answer his question, eight lanes?
Six to eight, potentially.
So, we need at least, at least double the size would be?
More than likely.
Let's say we were going to go build a new one.
They only got one gym.
Hold on, hold on.
And their landlord. Go ahead.
Anything else? If you were going to build a new one, how big would it be? Would you put eight to 12 in?
I would say anywhere from six to eight would be sufficient. The bigger you build it, the more operating costs you have, too, so you do have to be careful. There's more lifeguards, there's more heat and air conditioning, there's more water. So, that's a community decision, I think, and that's what we're asking for, is a community group with representation from the city and from other recreation users and community leaders to really address these issues and to look at this.
This is just a Band-Aid.
I think with regard to the pool, one of the things that is important from our standpoint is that currently, it's, the pool is used or occupied almost 70% of the time that the doors are open, which is a phenomenal percentage, I think, and it's going to increase because of the high school's swimming team and that program that is being reunit.
Is there any consideration of building a new building somewhere else? Or any talk, has there been any talk about it?
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's been a lot of conversation about doing a different building. You know, I don't think you'd have anybody on the board that would not be supportive of that. I think the issue we have right now is really trying to think about time. How do we, how do we get some time to kind of get everybody behind a movement, whether that's a new pool, whether that's a new Y facility that's connected to that? Maybe that makes sense. I think there's a lot of options, but I think the other side of it is, when you look at the impact of the Y, as far as what it does in the community, I'm all about the kids, that's really important to me. It's not something we can just shut off and say, "Hey, we'll take a couple of years and think about it." We're trying to be judicious about the resources we have, keep the facility running and operating, but also, in the background, have all of these dialogue and discussions going on about where do we go from here and how do we get there, and developing a plan for that.
Speaking of time, how much time do we have to decide? I mean, there's been other requests that have been brought forward, and they were brought at times either during our budgeting process or whatever, where we had some time to work on it. I mean, what's your timetable that gives us an opportunity? Because as we got in our packet, it'll, a lot of money. So, we'll need to try and figure out at least how we address it. What kind of timeline are you looking at for our decision?
Yeah, I, you know, obviously, from our perspective, we continue to keep going by saving dollars and watching how we spend dollars, but, you know, I guess my thought would be that if we could have some idea of a direction you guys are headed in the next 90 days, to somewhere in that range. I don't know if that's reasonable, unreasonable.
I've just been wondering if we could at least have a work session.
That was all I was wondering.
Have you been told? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You're on a roll tonight. I'm just going to sit back and listen to you. Last week it was me, now you're doing it.
Do the boilers need replaced by fall? Because the building's on its second set of boilers, this will be the third set of boilers, and that's going to be a big chunk, if you need them by fall. That would help answer their questions about how soon.
I know there's work going on on the boilers right now.
I know there is, too, because you bought some parts from it.
Yes. Some of our friends from Musco has just rebuilt boilers and did some things that will hopefully extend the life another year or so.
You think you'll get through the winter?
Yeah.
Okay, because that would be a crucial thing.
Well, I, I'm going to tell you where I stand, because I think we need a work session. I use the daycare, I use the facilities, and let me start here. Losing this place would be a big punch to the community, so we really have got to figure out a way to make this work. But, I can't see putting a $600,000 Band-Aid on this thing. I mean, I use that place five days a week, and I can't see it. Now, with all that being said, I definitely, you know, we were just kicking around some other ideas about, you know, maybe we can fund something where a comprehensive plan comes out and takes a look at all those needs that you're talking about, and start that as quickly as possible. You know, just thinking outside the box type of stuff, you know, we know we need daycare, we know we need those facilities. You know, this is something that I think is going to have to be voter-approved. And, you know, what I'd like to see is really go for the fences here, you know, let's look at putting, you know, maybe a $10 or $15 million daycare Y aquatic center, putting it together, putting the plan, putting it in front of the community, and see if we can't do it through a sales tax-funded initiative. Looking at maybe putting it out at MCRF, trying to come up with a real big solution here to the problem. Short-term, that's not going to solve you guys, I know that, and maybe in short-term, we're going to have to suck it up and go a year or two without a Y, but to get that plan in place. But, a $600,000 Band-Aid, it's an expensive Band-Aid for, quite honestly, we have no idea what's going to be the end of the tunnel on that one. But, if we can get working on a comprehensive plan of building bigger things or what you guys need, that's where I could be in support of that. And I definitely want to be in support of moving something forward here. I mean, we can't lose the Y. And whether we call it the Y, or that franchise goes away, you know, I like what Indianola has done. You know, I get behind that as a community and stand with that. So, you know, I like the Indianola model. Now, whether those numbers are too big, maybe, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm saying, we know that we had daycare stuff, we know that we have all these other issues. And I did a ball, we had a baseball tournament this weekend out there, you know. MCRF, we got to get those places paved. There's a lot, what was it, $3 million, $4 million worth of roads out there? So, if you take that and kind of look at all those needs and all these great things that we have, and we can shift it, and maybe we can share some of these resources, and maybe get some roads paved and get that out there, it might be the better idea. I don't know, but it's just kind of where I'm sitting right now. And I definitely want to go on with a work session and maybe kick some of those ideas around, or you say, "You know what? That's not going to work," or "It might."
You bet. No, I appreciate your comment.
It's a good idea.
Other comments?
Oh, yeah. Echo, we got to figure out how to make something work that's key to the community, it's just how's the best way to move it forward, both short-term and long-term. I agree with that.
And take this away, that, you know, I'm definitely in support of keeping this facility here. Like I said, whether it's the Y or we call it a rec, but we got to keep it. We just got to figure out the numbers and where to put it, and what that timeline is. And come together as a group and all stand behind it, and then make the sale to the public and say, "We guys stand with us on this."
So, are we saying we want to table this, do we have a work-study session to discuss this?
I think it's just action.
Is that what we're saying, or what are you saying, Doug?
We can do about anything. I mean, the presentation was what was on the agenda, so...
But, I mean, in reference to 28E agreement, we don't have that yet, do we?
No, they want one.
Okay, but I was wondering if we supposed to already have that.
One other comment I might make, in preparation for that, if you guys need more material, more information, we can get that to you, so...
If you don't get the cash, what happens? Short-term?
Well, I, you know, we've been successful in surviving by raising money in the community. And, you know, and I'm just giving you a hypothetical here, if you approved everything that we asked for tonight, you know, my guess is that our fundraising won't go to zero, you know, we would still continue to be successful in raising money. I think what's hard for us right now is we're raising money to pay payroll, you know, to pay those essential things that we get done, and if we continue to do that, you know, maybe we can continue on for a period of time. I just think we felt it was important for the community to know that, you know, we work awfully hard to keep the doors open right now, and we'll continue to work hard to keep those doors open, but because we feel like it's such an important institution to the community, we felt it was important to come to you guys and talk about it and see if there was not some form of help or assistance.
I could even go along with, all right, if we come up with a pretty good agreeable plan that we want to work towards, I could probably even go along with some bridge financing until we get to that point.
One last question, Dave.
We mentioned that, like, last year, the deficit was about $100,000.
Yeah.
So, we would have to go into strategic money because our funds that are available are some really limited.
Yeah, last, just to give you kind of the brief version of that, last year, we had about $100,000 deficit that hit our equity position, and our equity position is not very strong. So, it's the good graces of the bank, and once again, our donors that kind of keep the doors open there. So, I think one of the reasons we kind of, if you will, rung the alarm bell here a little bit, was that because of the commitment to the community, we felt like we didn't want to wait until we come running in here and say, "We have to have tomorrow," kind of thing. We wanted to be able to present something that said, "We need a little bit of time, and we need your help to get, to bridge that effort to get to where we need to be."
A month to run?
What's our top-line revenue, is about $1.4 million?
Just the pool. Can you break out the, how much is the pool a year? Do you know that number?
That's what's in here, isn't it?
So, are utilities, are about $7,000 a month?
For the pool?
What do you think of that?
Utilities, expenses, insurance.
Keeping the pool warm, I mean, would you say half of that? I mean, just...
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how to break these down.
We can get you, I can get you all that data. We can get all that if you guys want that for a work.
Yeah, the Y has done us...
It's got to be half the heating costs because this is a year round.
I understand that, but as we start to work, you know, like I said, we might have to give up some luxuries, and if that pool shuts, and I use the pool, I don't want to see the pool go away, believe me, I don't. But if those are some of the solutions that we're going to have to take to get us there, all that stuff needs to be on the table.
Yeah, because I'd like to know the daycare. Do we even break even? Do you even break even with the daycare?
If childcare were profitable, poor profit businesses would be doing it.
You don't then, do you?
About a 1%.
I mean, that's the problem we have with the building of the Nard, it couldn't fund itself because there's no margin there. And don't forget about our city pool, we have our outdoor city pool, which leaks, and it doesn't pay for itself either, but it's still a good amenity, but I mean, it's just...
But we fund it.
And I think comprehensive planning, I mean, those are things that maybe we can look at combining, you know, maybe we can talk about closing that pool, and you move that one out there, and you combine that, and, you know, we're able to get some of that.
Sure. That, one other thing I was just going to mention about childcare, too, is that about just shy of 60% of our kids get some form of public assistance. And when you look at the reimbursement rates that we get for that, that's really barely a cost-based system, so that puts part of the challenge. We also have special needs kids sometimes, and we accommodate that. So, if we have to have one-on-one, we accommodate that, that person pays no more for that. I think that's the right thing to do, but it certainly makes challenges for us from a financial perspective.
And everybody, I think, knows that.
Another example of that is that...
Jim, would you come to the microphone?
Sure. For the alternative high school, we, at the Y, provide virtually 100% of their physical ed requirements for that, and every one of those students is on scholarship. So, it's, it's a wonderful thing, but it's not a profit center. And so, that's an example of what David was talking about, I think, along the same lines of childcare.
Is there even a school that pays for that?
Well, I think, I don't know that. The United Way used to participate in that, and then stopped doing it, and so, the Y began to do it.
Well, the school should do it.
Well, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that. I just don't know why...
I mean, they're all students, it's a school, gets money for each one of those kids.
We ended up there, but we are there, and that would be part, for instance, of conversations we would have in the comprehensive plan as we go forward.
Along those lines with the, with the high school swimming program starting up, was there any funds brought forward from the school for then operating the high school program?
We did, we did get some reimbursement for that, some cost reimbursement for that, so that's been very helpful, I think. But it's, it's a bit of a, I think with a lot of the school system, Don, you can correct me, but somewhat, it's a trade-off. We're trading some of those dollars for rent, because we provide, part of our childcare that we're providing is provided in school facility as well, so...
I don't want to throw Superintendent Ryder under the bus, so, just to be clear, the school district provides preschool funding for our preschool programming. There is also a collaborative grant now for our after-school programming, that's a significant amount of funding for the 90 children in our after-school program. The school did pay 100% of our rental fee for the swim team. For the alternative high school, I can't pretend to know school budgets, and there's limited amounts for different services and things that they provide. So, for the alternative school, they provide a small rental of $300, and their PE teacher comes with the students, and they do their PE at the Y, and in addition to that, the Y provides 100% scholarships for those kids, so they can use the facility outside of their structured PE time as well.
The school's paying for the PE teacher?
Yeah.
They're paying a small rental fee for that.
No, for the teacher's salary, they're paying?
Yes, yes, they cover that. So, there is some trade agreements. Also, we do provide a sixth-grade gym and swim for the school, and we do not charge for that. That's in exchange for our childcare classroom rent at the Webster Building. We can't afford rent for that classroom, but we can afford rent for the preschool classrooms. So, Russ has been wonderful to work with and really has increased revenues that he's given, that the school has provided to the Y for services.
Well, it's clear we need to have a work session and sit down and discuss this and talk about it, and get the added information we need to have, so that would be my suggestion.
I agree.
I agree. I think we've got consensus on that, so, thank you very much. Appreciate the information.
Thank you, thanks, Jim. Don?
Moving on, item I. This is Consider An Ordinance To Vacate And Sell 120-Foot By 16-and-a-Half-Foot Of The North-South Public Alley. It's adjacent to 505 Fourth Avenue East. This is the second reading. Thomas Lucius, a contract deed holder of 505 North Fourth Avenue East, has requested the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to their property be vacated. Reason for the alley vacate is to restrict the traffic flow on the alley. Darrell Martin, the owner of 505 Fourth Avenue East, approves of the proposed alley vacate. Mr. Lucius and the adjacent property owners, Kathleen and Denny Seibert of 511 Fourth Avenue East, intend to purchase their respective halves of the alley. The applicant intends to purchase their section of the alley to help restrict traffic through the alley. The city conducted a survey of the households with direct access to the alley, and among the residents that responded out of nine, eight of them want the alley to be vacated, and one does not want the alley vacated because it will block access to the garage located at 508 Third Avenue East. The property along 508 Third Avenue East will have access to the northern portion of the alley off of Third Avenue East. This alley also contains public sanitary sewer and MCG utility infrastructure, and so easement rights will need to be retained for access to the above-mentioned utilities. Planning and zoning commission considered... Planning and zoning commission considered this item at their May 12, 2014 meeting, recommending by a vote of four to one to one, four yes, one no, one abstention, that the city council approve the alley vacate request. Commission member Holden Barnhart opposed the alley vacate. Commission member Wendell Campbell abstained because he was familiar with the property owner in the area. So do we have a motion to allow, or, yeah, to allow this vacation and sale of the north-south public alley?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. This is.
Is Adam here?
All right, well, the guy.
He said he was going to try to come back after he talked to his tenant.
Tenant.
This guy.
His tenant has moved, the house is now.
He knows it's empty, and last night I was there, but.
Oh, so the guy who wants to do it's gone?
The guy that was causing the problem for Seibert is gone.
Okay.
But if we allow this sale to go through, that means the guy, what's his name, that doesn't want the alley sold?
508.
Has to use the east-west alley for access to his garage. And that alley is not used by hardly anybody else, so that means we would not be able to allow any other selling of those at east-west alley.
That's right.
If we tried to, if we allowed this one. I don't see anything on Seibert's putting up a gate like they requested the last time.
You say you don't see.
I don't see it in the writing here.
Yeah, I don't think it said it in the text last time.
Last time it was, it was in the text, they wanted to put a gate up to keep traffic from going through there.
I don't remember saying, I know that they were complaining about traffic, I don't remember the gate.
I think the bottom line is you're going to landlock somebody.
Yeah, and this is an alley that's used a lot, you know, it's not one of the overgrown grass and that, but no. With the easements and everything that have to be retained for the utilities, would they even be allowed to put a fence up across?
They can down the fence.
Would they be able to get a permit to do that?
Yeah.
Knowing it would have to come down.
Sure, and you know, we'd give them a permit if there was easements there.
If there's easements, you can't close them, right?
I really think this is more of a nuisance problem, I think it's been resolved by the guy moving. And now I think it's between the landlord putting a new, a different renter in there, trying to resolve the problem.
The person that wanted to buy it, is it here?
She was here earlier. Not here either, no.
Wasn't she here earlier?
I didn't see her.
I didn't see her.
No, I didn't either.
Well, I'm confused.
Any further questions regarding the sale of this? Roll call, please.
Calligery?
No.
Jimminis?
No.
Moore?
No.
Van Zetten?
No.
First Day?
No.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
No.
Moving on, item J. The Oskaloosa Rides Transit System Presentation. The Oskaloosa Rides is a community effort that has been made possible by partnership between Oskaloosa Community Leaders, Iowa Department of Transportation, 1015 Regional Transit, and the City of Oskaloosa. Staff has a presentation explaining Oskaloosa Rides and the fixed bus route that is coming to town. Staff will also be requesting consensus from the city council to proceed with a financial commitment of $1,000 from the agreed-upon $5,000 pledged contribution for the acquisition of bus stop signs, posts, and brochure holders. So who's doing the presentation?
Right here, Mayor.
Oh, sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening, council, my name is Dylan Wolfinger, management analyst, City of Oskaloosa. We have here today just an update on the Oskaloosa Rides, kind of talked about this during the budget presentation earlier in the wintertime, and I just wanted to keep everybody updated in what we're doing. So far, I'm just going to remind you of the players that we have today that have been involved in it, got them listed on my slide. I listed current members and former or original members, just to remind everyone that there was an original group that had brought a lot of things to the table, got this started, but they ran some roadblocks that stopped, and now we currently picked it up, and we've been running with it ever since. And so I just want to remind you again the need for a bus route. Several of our community groups that have a wide range of clients that do not have access to a car or no means of transportation during the day, we felt that we really could develop something that would provide them with a way to get sort of the essential places in town, so that's why we felt that a fixed bus route was something that could really be an asset to the community. Just threw up some quick facts up there, 17% of the population of Oskaloosa, 65 or older, 23% of Oskaloosa residents live before the poverty line, and the current 1015 service does not work for all residents, and 6.6% of Mahaska County households do not have access to a vehicle. So the group got to the drawing board, and currently we work with a lot of team players like 1015 Transit, and we came up with the bus route. This is actually from the original group, and it's been modified currently to fix or get some new stops in there and some different things that we've done. We've tried the route a couple times already, we've driven it across town. Many of you may have seen our bus that we've been taking around, just trying to get it figured out. So you can see we made some important stops along the route, goes through the city. My next slide kind of breaks it down into stop times. So we have about 15 stops, and the times are right on the hour in the mornings, and then they switch off in the afternoon to be on the half hour. And the bus runs from 9:00 in the morning until 5:30 at night. This bus is going to run on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and it will be accommodating to both pedestrians and also handicap members of the community. So just to update you on some of the information that we have, the fare is going to be free for children 18 and under, adults will be $1. Monthly passes can be picked up, $15 for adults, $10 for senior citizens and college students. We recognize William Penn, we have a large community up there that we want to be able to give them a chance to catch a ride on this. Tickets and passes can be purchased at our United Way and our local grocery stores. And where do you actually get on the bus? Well, we have those stops that we talked about earlier, I'll just throw them up again. And we've actually made this, the route is designed so you can get picked up anywhere. We felt that the stops are great, but we also know that people live in their community, in the community, and they may not be as close to a stop as they want to be, so they can just do, get on the route anywhere except A Avenue. Ran into some issues with that being a higher-density road and the Department of Transportation, so we won't have anyone picked up on that. But anytime they're on the right side of the bus, they can get picked up. It's just a safety concern, so we need them on that side. Currently, the service that is offered by 1015, kind of at the bottom of my side, is the call schedule ride, and that's a service they provide where you can call 24 hours in advance, they'll come pick you up, take you to your destination for $2 in town, $4 in the country, and they can also give you a return trip also for additional $2 and $4 in the country. This service is provided to everyone in Mahaska County. Some of the things that people run into with this service is that not everything can be scheduled 24 hours in advance, so they felt that if they had, if they could just jump on a bus or kind of work their schedule around the bus, that'd be something more inviting to some of our residents. And the bus is something that they can rely on every day, so that service will still be in effect, it'll still be very functional, and you can still call anytime to 1015 to work on that. But also with our bus route, we're going to have a paratransit, and that's going to allow for any handicap individual that cannot physically make it to a bus stop or anywhere on the route to get picked up. The nice thing about this is the paratransit will be running with the bus route time, so it'll be from 9:00 in the morning till 5:30 at night for any individual who cannot make it to the bus stop, and this will pick them up for the same fare as the bus and take them anywhere within town. So we're excited about that service as it provides additional opportunity to residents of Oskaloosa. The funding for the project, the Iowa Department of Transportation has the State Transit Assistant Program. I gave a quick blurb on my slide talking about it. Basically, they'll reimburse you 80% of your cost the first year and 50% the second year. So our route that we're going to run is going to be approximately $1,030 per week, and so our funding's covered, like I said, 80% first year, 50% the second. And so this led us with a gap, and we were able to bring in sponsorships of over 25,000 throughout community sponsors. We had a lot of people step up, and it's very exciting, they see the potential of this project to really be something for Oskaloosa. So that's going to provide us with additional money for our first year and into the second year, and then to finish off the rest of that, we'll be relying on ridership dollars from the, both federal. So those are, that's kind of how we break down our cost, if you have any questions on that. I will answer them, just got a couple things left. And the City of Oskaloosa, on the front of the agenda item, talked about contributing for bus stop signs and traffic posts and brochure holders in an amount less than $1,000. That's just something that the council decided to allocate around $5,000 if need be, and this is a part of the project that we can help out on, that we felt as staff would be something useful for the bus route. So I just want to mention our sponsors. They helped us get this pilot program off the ground, just very really excited for it, we want to see how this affects Oskaloosa, how people are going to use this service. And we also had a grant from the Mahaska County Community Foundation that we're really thankful for, and we're just excited that we had such community involvement on this. Our start date is next Monday, one week, June 23rd, and so the bus will be traveling around Oskaloosa. Encourage you to take a ride, enjoy yourself, catch the scenery, join in with everyone. Patrons who ride the bus will have access to a lot of the things that I listed. Importantly, one of the more important stops this summer is our summer lunch program feeding sites. I think this is an exciting move, kids can jump on the bus for free, go to a summer lunch program, get their meal, get their education, whatever else events are happening there, and then jump back on the bus and. And it does go towards our downtown, so that just opens it up for everything, and also out to our hospital, so we're excited that it's taking off the Mahaska Health Partnership. We feel that people are going to get even more access to their healthcare because they'll have a bus that takes them out there. And lastly, what is needed to consider this pilot program successful? Well, we want to provide transportation to people who don't have transportation or cannot access any. We are hoping that ridership numbers increase during the two-year pilot program, and we want our federal ridership dollars to provide funding that will help continue this program after our two years. I can't stress that it's a pilot program, this is something we're trying new for Oskaloosa. It's very new for a city our size. We, we're trying to find examples throughout the state, most cities that have any type of bus route are usually 20,000 or more, so this is something exciting for us to try as a city. Evaluation, I, myself, along with Amy Langdon and Jay Allison out of 1015, who are also here tonight, will be evaluating this every six months. We feel that this route can be adjusted to really, if we're missing a certain population, we can work with them on getting that, because I feel that we may, we may, we made a lot of right decisions at the beginning, but we also want to be open to other decisions. We want this to be a very fluid project, and we want to be open to different requests from residents, and we want to work with them on this. And we're going to, we're excited to gain community input from this, we're hoping we receive a lot of that throughout the two years that we work on it. And we hope that community partners will continue to work with us to ensure a successful route and that everything will go, I guess, as you would say, according to plan, and that this would become an asset to the community. And like I said, I just want to reiterate, we're starting on Monday, and we'll be running Monday, Wednesday, Friday from 9:00 to 5:30. And it's just, I'm really excited, I think the community really picked up on this, and there's a lot of chatter out there that also says that the community groups are really excited. If you have any questions, I am all yours.
It's going to be starting on Monday, it's running three days a week. What would it take to throw that into a five-day-a-week thing, do you suppose?
Well, it would require, we ran the numbers for that, and it was.
$2,000 more.
Roughly $2,000 more a week, and.
$1,500.
Yeah.
No.
$1,500, roughly $1,500 a week. And we did, we ran with that, and we felt that if our sponsorship got us to that point where we could go to five days a week, we would go with that. But I think we're also trying something very new to this community, and we wanted to, we knew that we couldn't catch everything, so we felt that if we could catch at least some people on a three-days-a-basis week, then we could really start something and then always grow to that. I think that's something that we can also think about. So $1,500 a week would have got us there, but currently with our funding, I think that our safest bet right now is the three days a week.
Dylan, who funds the 1015 regional transit? Where do they get their money from?
1015 is funded through the state, through the federal.
Sir, could you please go to the microphone? And not everybody knows who you are.
Okay.
I'm Jay Allison, I'm the new director for 1015 Transit, started January 1, new to the whole field. I started as a bus driver there two years ago, part-time, because I was finishing my bachelor's degree of elementary ed, and two years later, I'm running it. So I changed my major to psychology. Three sources, three main sources. Transit fares, which would be the money we take in through Medicaid, through workshops, general public, state assistance, and federal assistance. And roughly, our budget is about, about a million six, a million five roughly, is kind of what our budget looks like.
So where I was kind of headed, I know the supervisors have talked about this project, does, do they have any skin in this?
We receive $2,500 for each of our counties. We cover 10 counties. So to give you an idea real quick, would be Keokuk, Mahaska, Jefferson, Wapallo, Monroe, Lucas, Wayne, Appinose, David, Davis, and Van Buren.
And you receive how much?
$2,500 from each county.
Per year?
Per year.
Thank you.
Yep, and that goes towards capital, you know, buying buses. Right now, like I say, because I'm new to the game, and there's a lot that needs to be accomplished, I have a million dollars in wish lists for buying buses to try to get us back up to where we need to be. I'll know here probably in the next month or so how many of those vehicles we'll get. I've got about 16 vehicles proposed. However, I didn't get the one I wanted. I wanted a new medium duty for Oskaloosa, and, but prior administration caused us a little problem, so, you know, I'm looking maybe a year or two down the road to get a new bus here, but that would be our dream, would be a new medium-duty bus for your city.
Any other questions or comments? Dylan, this looks like great work, nice job, it's good to see this thing come to fruition.
Yeah, it's definitely a lot of work from several community members, and we couldn't have done it without them, and a lot of people really stepped up, and I'm here speaking, but there's a lot more people behind the scenes, so.
Please forward the appreciation of the council to them for, for job well done, it's good to see this going. Moving on, item number K. Considering a resolution to accept and file the 2014 Oskaloosa Beacon and University Park Insurance Services Office Public Protection Class Survey, in October of 2013, Insurance Service Office, ISO Incorporated, performed a public protection class survey of the Oskaloosa Fire Department. In April of 2014, the analysis of the structural fire suppression delivery system was received. This report and presentation by Chief Mark Neff provides an analysis of the resulting PPC survey rating. Mark, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The fire service rating system is, comes in, looks at a large number of items, facilities, and practices that a community should have to fight fires effectively. The scoring is on a 0 to 105.5 scale, so I'm going to try to keep this as brief as I can, I know you guys are probably presentated out, but the, the rating system actually looks at four areas of communications, or four areas, emergency communications, the fire department itself, including its operational procedures, water supply, and then finally a community risk reduction section that looks at communities' efforts to reduce losses through fire prevention, safety education, and fire investigation. When the ISO comes in and looks at this stuff, they require three years of. When the ISO comes in and looks at this stuff, they require three years of complete documentation in all the required fields for review prior to them coming in and even looking at us on-site. Then, we also have to have those available for them when they do come in for the visit. We'll run through these real quickly. Emergency communications, you can get a maximum of 10 points. When the field representatives come in, they look at our emergency reporting system, our communication center, the number of dispatchers, whether we have a computer-aided dispatch, and then the number of dispatch circuits and the notification procedures that they use. The fire department can get a maximum score of 50. ISO comes in, reviews the distribution of our fire companies throughout our area, checks that we do service test our pumps regularly, and we inventory each engine. Also looks at our records, determines such factors as type of extent of training that we provide, the number of people who participate in the training, firefighter responses to the emergencies, and then finally, maintenance and testing of our department equipment. The next area is the water supply. Here, we can get a maximum of 40 points. This part looks at the actual distribution of the city of Oskaloosa water supply system. They review the hydrant inspections, frequency of how often those hydrants are tested, and then finally, they count the number of hydrants that are no more than 1,000 feet from each of the representative locations that they might be looking at.
What's considered a regular...
A structure large enough that would require the 3,500 gallon a minute flow. As an example, the Elks building over here, or something of that nature. So, they, that's what they're basing it off, is a 3,500 gallon per minute flow.
Okay.
The last one is community risk reduction, and this is actually a bonus section, if you want to call it that. It offers a maximum of five and a half points. This section allows for extra points for communities that work hard at public safety education, fire prevention, without unduly affecting communities that don't have this program in place. In this risk reduction section, they look at fire prevention, again, safety education, and then fire investigation. Here's your different protection classes, and I've highlighted Class 6 because that's where we're currently at. We're between the 40 and 49.99. We're currently scored a 40.45, okay? So, we're barely in that Class 6 protection class. Here's what we've come up with with our new survey that we had done last fall. This is the old rating versus the new rating. In the emergency communication in 1996, we were 6.59 out of 10. That's been improved to 7.55 out of 10. On the fire department side of it, in 1996, we were 13.68 out of 50, and in 2014, we were 27.26 out of 50. So, we nearly doubled that. The next section is water supply, and I must make an announcement right here now. I made a typographical error. I looked at the wrong number when I put this presentation together. So, on water supply in 1996, we had a 29.42 out of 40, and I just recognized this tonight. It's like I couldn't figure out what my numbers was doing wrong. That 22.75 out of 40 should actually be 32.26 out of 40. So, water supply made an improvement as well, and I apologize for that error on my part. In the community risk reduction in 1996, we had 0 out of 5 and 1/2 possible. In 2014, we went to 4.05 out of 5.5. I mentioned it earlier, we're currently at a 40.45, which is barely a Class 6. In a letter dated April 28, 2014, the Oskaloosa Fire Department received a score of 65.89, which places solidly in a Class 4 rating, which will go into effect August of 2014. Where's this place, Oskaloosa? There's only 5,216 cities out of 49,010 in the United States that have acquired a Class 4 rating. Places Oskaloosa in the top 70% nationwide. Places is on par with Indianola, Cedar Falls, Urbandale, Muscatine, Newton, Ankeny, Burlington, to name a few. Next slide is just a bar graph, again, of nationwide where we sit, and we'd be in that Class 4 classification beginning in August. What's this mean for the citizens of Oskaloosa? Homeowners can expect to see an average of 10 to 15% reduction on their fire insurance rates. Businesses can expect to see around the same reduction. I couldn't get anybody to get really nailed down on what we might see, because there's a lot of factors that go into figuring this. You could live in one area of the city and actually be paying higher insurance rates than another area based on the number of fires that are in that particular area of the town. So, this rating does include Beacon and University Park, so those citizens will also see a reduction. How do we acquire the new rating? By improving our pump capacities to meet that required water flow of that 3,500 gallon a minute. By improving all aspects of the department, record-keeping, requiring higher levels of certifications and training mandates throughout all the ranks of the fire department. So, it's been all-encompassing. Spending a lot more time and effort on fire prevention programs and pre-planning, and by improving the way we contact off-duty staff in response to emergency calls. What's next? We're currently working in preparation for doing a rural fire protection survey in hopes of reducing the classification for our areas that we cover within five miles of the city. It'll include an exercise on how efficiently we can dump and refill our water tenders in addition to some of the information that we've put together already in the city survey. That's hoping to be coming up, I'm going to say, by this fall. So, questions?
Sure. With what we're looking at with the new fire department being considered, I guess, asked two ways. Did we get quote-unquote penalized any because of our facilities we have now? And said another way, will we get credit in this type of survey if we move forward with some of the things that we're looking at with regard to our facilities?
Right. The facilities itself, we really didn't get penalized a whole lot because we're, well, I shouldn't say that at all. We didn't get penalized at all for our facilities. What they look at more is the equipment that we have and how we utilize the training methods that we imply. So, no, I don't think we're going to get, we didn't get penalized, and I don't think we're going to get any real big credit for having another station. What would improve if we was to have a second station somewhere to get it closer because of the response times? That's really the only thing that would make a big difference. And more staffing. Yeah, I mean, I figured that was going to be the first question, is how do we get to a 3 from the 4? So, staffing and training is what's really needed for the next step, which the training comes out of the funding side of. It's a lot more hours.
One of the things, Mayor Council, this process, Mark and I talked about about four years ago, and the idea behind it is it helps gauge kind of where we're at as a community. Obviously, it hasn't been done since 1996, and as a new chief who's worked in the department, he's gone through the ISO rating, but it hadn't been done in a long time. And me, as the new manager, one of the first questions I asked him was, what is our ISO rating? And from that, here we are, four years, three, four years later, it gives us a good insight into what type of job he's doing as chief, and previous chiefs have done, and what our staff are capable of doing. So, I think it's, you know, hats off to them for doing what they need to do. But it also helps us outline what we need to do to keep making improvements. So, essentially, it helps us plan for the provision of the service going forward. So, it's a good tool. Glad Mark got it done, and hopefully, everybody should be happy with the results.
Very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Inspector, our insurance agents will be getting a lot of phone calls. Moving on, item L. This is another one that the council's been anxious to get moving on. This is to consider a site plan for the property at 312 A Avenue West, also known as the New Hardee's Restaurant.
We had a resolution to accept the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We just did the presentation, I think.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the report?
Second.
Anyone care to offer resistance to that?
No.
Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetton?
Yes.
Bersteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. So, back to item L. This is the site plan for the New Hardee's Restaurant. Westar Foods has submitted a site plan for the Hardee's Restaurant to be located at 312 A Avenue West. The site in consideration is .72 acres, and the present zoning of this property would be commercial, excuse me, community commercial, which is a CC. The applicant has submitted the required site plan, along with elevations and a landscape plan for review for city staff. The site plan illustrates a 3,575-square-foot building, has a drive-through window that facilitates two aisles, and revised vehicular circulation on the site. Proposed site will have two entrances from A Avenue West and another entrance from High Avenue West. New five-foot-wide sidewalks will be installed along A Avenue West and High Avenue West. The proposed sidewalk on A Avenue West will have a 10-foot setback from the back of the curb. The site indicates a total of 31 parking spaces, including two handicap-accessible ones. The proposed site will be connecting to existing sanitary sewer and water utilities. The existing mall parking on the south of the proposed site will need to be repainted in order to accommodate the proposed changes. Staff is recommending approval of the site plan with a few stipulations. One, all sidewalk ramps will need to conform to ADA standards. The sidewalk ramp at the northwest corner of the site may need extra curb in order to meet the ADA standards. The existing sidewalk ramp from the urban skate park will need to be realigned with the proposed sidewalk ramp at the southeast corner. Number two, indicate sidewalk along the west side of the site to connect to the proposed sidewalk on A Avenue and High Avenue. Three, provide a lighting plan, and number four, to provide signage details. Any signs must meet the sign regulations from Chapter 17.30 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code. In addition, the Iowa DOT has the following stipulations for the site plan. First, the storm sewer intake to the east of the west A Avenue entrance must be a minimum of 10 feet from the curb radius. Therefore, the intake must be either located further to the east, or the entrance must shift to the west or be made more narrow. Number two, the sidewalk ramps at the west A Avenue entrance have to be aligned. Number three, a stop sign, stop bar. Any other required pedestrian crossing symbols or warnings will be necessary at the east A Avenue entrance. And finally, number four, the Hardee's parking lot storm sewer intakes have to show how they will be connected to the existing sewer system, and drainage calculations have to be shown. So, at their meeting on June 9, the Planning and Zoning Commission, by a vote of 6-0, recommended approval of the Hardee's site plan with all city staff and Iowa DOT stipulations. So, with that in mind, do we have a motion for approval of the site plan with the recommendations included?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this?
Why don't you stop building?
What is kind of the timeline?
I have the green shirts from here.
We still have some hoops. I shouldn't say "we," there are still some hoops that continue to be jumped through. We've done a number of different things working with Hardee's and with their folks on this. And we had to file at one point a quiet title action to try to answer some old title objections. The current snag right now is trying to get Penny's corporate headquarters to sign off on an amendment to the, some current easement rights they have with the parking lot. It goes back a number of years, as I recall, on one side of the mid-1980s, when all this was being developed. Essentially, the way it works right now, Penny's, as part of the lease agreement, they have an easement across the parking lot just for pedestrian traffic and customer parking and such. Hardee's, of course, does not want to build their building on footprint where somebody's got a parking easement underneath their building, so we're trying to get that amended. We've had it for some time to Penny's corporate. We've had some difficulty getting some responses back from them. I think we're making some headway now. But I believe that's probably the last thing. Assuming arguendo, they agree that, they agree to that, which I think they're probably on line to do. Assuming that they agree to that, I think that's probably the last holdup, I would think. Mike, you agree?
The additional item would be the co-location of the sign, making sure that we get the partners involved in that, and they sign off to it. I know verbally, we've received commitment that they would be approval of that, but we need to make sure there's actual signed documentation.
And once again, as Mike has indicated, in the conversations with the mall owners, they have indicated that conceptually, they're in agreement. There were some diagrams that were shipped back and forth, or some sketches showing envisioned signage and such, and I think everybody was on board with that, although, once again, the final details have not been ironed out.
Do we need to go through the process of making sure it meets what was exchanged, 17.30 of our code?
There would be a five-foot height variance essentially needed. I think that's the last drawing that I saw.
There will be some variance in terms of the size of the sign, but I think it's better off if it's combined together because it's reducing the redundancy of signs, so...
I must clutter on my...
If we don't have anyone from Westar here tonight, do we?
I'm here for the...
These are good.
Okay. Do you have anything to add before?
No, you had a long meeting. I don't need to present.
I hold the current record for shortest meeting. I was kind of hoping I'd get the longest one, but apparently not. Tonight's not the night.
Mayor Council, obviously, they want to get started as soon as they can. They would hope that by now, we would have approval of the necessary documentations, and they would have broken around. But I still think that optimistically, we can get things resolved and move forward, make a start this year.
Interestingly enough, our conversations too, and I apologize, I can't recall your name, I know we visited the other day, but when we spoke, you were talking, as I recall, about timeframes typically on construction. And from what I understood, if things were suddenly finished up tonight, for example, we would envision something being constructed in a fairly short timeframe?
Yes. My name's Mary Jurzwick. I'm with Barthor and West out of West Des Moines. This is the fourth building that I've been a part of as far as the design goes, and they are, once they get going, they go pretty quickly as far as the construction goes, assuming there's no hiccups in the weather or anything like that that get in their way. But, you know, I can't promise anything, but, you know, three to four months, they could probably be open, if things go well.
That's been pretty consistent with what they've said.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this?
Does this have to have three readings?
No.
So, they're good to go after night?
Yes, for the site plan.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetton?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
That passes. Takes us to item M. This is the consideration of an appointment to the Water Board. The term of Pete Satimi on the Water Board ends on June 30 of 2014. Mr. Satimi has indicated a willingness to accept reappointment to the board. Applications were also received from Jerome Blanchard, Deb Felpot, Wyatt Russell, Mike Boer, and John Zobel. Appointments to the Water Board are for six years and are made by the mayor with city council approval. It's a three-member board with three males currently serving. We had a series of interviews that we did with the six individuals who applied for this, and all of them gave good interviews in one form or another. And so, it made the selection a little bit more difficult because they all had different qualifications that they brought to the table. And so, as I was thinking about making this appointment, I was thinking about how the Water Board and the city council have had some difficulty in the past with communication, and I believe some of it had to do with a difference in what we believe to be the emphasis of what our body... what our bodies were trying to accomplish. And so with the construction or purchase of a new building, the construction of new offices, including the landscaping of a circle drive, drive-up window, they've made the water operation very nice. And so at the same time that was happening, there was a lack of cooperation, where we were suggesting, well, the water department has the same customers that the city council does. So the two nonprofit entities, it would make sense for them to be cooperative with one another, and we didn't have that happening. And then I guess what really frosted a lot of people was, at the same time we were talking cost reduction and not getting that done, they came back and said, well, we need to do increases in the rates. Ten percent right now, five percent the next year, then the five percent the next year, and then five percent the next year. And so there's no question in my mind that we've got really nice facilities, and when we asked some of the people in the interview about what their goal was, they said, we want to have a very nice, robust facility. It's my belief that the city council is saying we are not emphasizing the right thing here, that perhaps we've emphasized the facilities a little too much, and now perhaps it's time to give some consideration to the customer. And so with that in mind, I went back through, and I thought the best interview was done by John Zobel, and so I'll go ahead and advance that name and ask for your support.
First and second, I'll have?
Yep.
Someone's the second.
Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, item seven. Reports from city staff, city manager.
Mayor and Council, just a quick follow-up on the discussion from Friday night. I guess one of the things that wasn't clear to me was the request to have the study session with the YMCA, and then why it stated a ninety-day turnaround, and I guess I'm kinda curious, what's your expectation for how quickly we would get together?
I would suggest sooner than later. The 28Es don't write themselves, and so with the council, I believe we have a strategic planning session next Monday, but as we go into July, perhaps the second Monday in July, or if, I don't know if we have anything going on before the first meeting in July. But anyway, that would be my suggestion anyway. I don't know if the council supports me on that, but I would say the front end as quick as we can.
That's all I had, though.
Amy, anything?
No, sir.
Okay. City attorney, anything to add?
Nothing, thank you.
Council? Okay, Joe? Okay. Scotty?
I've had a lot of calls, but I forward them to Michael for concern on roads and speed on roads, so I won't plan this out right now.
Okay.
I guess in the strategic planning, I think probably you could discuss also adding there the importance of the wooden playground maintenance, and we need to get it, we've had a few calls on that, I think, and some people complain about disrepair, so, you could bring that up as well.
Scott?
I guess the only request I would make is we consider the last item that we just discussed. It would be nice if we could have the recommendation with the packet, so there'd be some time that we could think about some of the other names and maybe ask some questions, so, in the future, that's just a request I would have, that we would be able to have some time to research the other items.
Okay.
And the last thing, Mason mentioned it earlier, but I was part of hosting a tournament this past weekend out at our facilities, out at the Lacy Complex. We had twenty-three youth teams in from around the state, and it's the fifth year we've done it, and every year, we just get wonderful comments from people visiting from very, what I would consider, nice communities throughout the state, and they always remark at how great of facilities we have. Cher, I see that you're here, you and your staff do a great job with it, and it's just great for our community, and I'd also like to go on record as thanking Chad Riedfeld for all the work that he does. The facilities are in great shape. The comments we get, that I get as a tournament director, people can't say enough about the facilities, both the design and the condition it's in, so, thank you.
No, Pastor, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Tom?
The only I'll say about the last vote, John, I have no problem with you. I think you put in, I think there was a better candidate before you, but that's just my opinion.
No worries.
Yep.
Mason? Anything? Okay. I've got nothing else to add. Thank you for your patience tonight, a long meeting, and so with that, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Move.
All in favor, say aye. Good jury.
All right.
All right. You gotta make your mark.